Happy New Year, everybody, and good evening. I would like to call the Monday, January thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five Blue Springs Planning Commission Meeting to Order. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tracy, can I get a roll call for attendance, please?
Of course. Commissioner Humphrey?
Present.
Commissioner Stokenberry?
Present.
Commissioner Smith? Commissioner Anderson? Comis-- I'm sorry, Commissioner Sandersen?
Yep, no worries, present.
Commissioner Cradoff?
Present.
Commissioner Graham?
Present.
Commissioner Howe? Commissioner Egersol?
Present.
Chairperson Hemming?
Present.
Thank you, Tracy. I would like to take this opportunity to welcome everyone this evening and those watching from home. Tonight's agenda consists of, number one, the minutes from the last meeting on December ninth. Items two through five is the rezoning, Plan Development Concept Plan, preliminary plat and site plan design review for Tommy's Express Car Wash. Item six is a master alternative sign plan for Target. And three and four are community development. That would be seven.
Seven and eight.
Seven and eight. At this time, I would entertain a motion for the consent agenda for our last meeting.
Salute.
Second.
And a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Next up, I will open the public hearing for Agenda items two and three. Rezoning RZ eleven dash two-four dash nine-four-one-eight and Plan Development Concept Plan, PDC eleven dash two-four dash nine-four-one-nine for Tommy's Express Car Wash, with items number four and five being held concurrently. I will ask for exhibits from our city attorney, Josh Newell.
The city would like to enter Exhibits one through eight.
Thank you, Josh. All those that are here who would wish to speak, please stand and be sworn in as a group. Thank you. Ms. Faride, do you have a presentation for us?
I do.
Thank you.
Chantel Frye, nine oh three West Main Street, on behalf of the city. Before you this evening is a request for a rezoning, a PD concept plan, and a preliminary plat for Tommy's Car Wash, Express Car Wash, which is a proposed tunnel car wash located at five oh nine Northwest Seven Highway. The current property includes a total of one parcel of approximately point seven-four acres plus or minus and is owned currently as general business. The first request is to rezone the subject property from a general business to a PDC, which is a planned development commercial. The two thousand and fourteen comprehensive plan include the subject property as neighborhoods, which is defined as areas for residential living arranged in a connected pattern of streets and blocks to provide access to civic and neighborhood amenities. The comp plan also states that the areas designated to neighborhood should have connections to gathering places of neighborhood center to meet the daily needs. The intent to rezone it to the PD zoning district is to encourage a unique and high-quality neighborhoods, commercial, or mixed-use development through the integrated development plan that provides the flexibility of the standard zoning district in the regulations. The proposed, uh... Excuse me, sorry. Through the PD zoning, the applicant is proposing the property to allow the land uses within the GB, General Business Zoning District, with the addition of a car wash land use with the exclusion of marijuana cannabis-related uses, adult entertainment uses, bar and tavern establishment uses, and manufacturing. The second request is for the PD concept plan covering this parcel. It would have the Express Car Wash for Tommy's. Two proposed access points. The northern access point is a right-in entrance only. It will be clearly marked as entrance only. And then the southern access point, which is here, will also be a right-only, uh... with clearly marked as an exit. To reinforce this restriction, there are Chevron striping that will be applied to discourage unintended access movements of the southern egress. And this striping will be angled to guide vehicles into making a right turn exit only. So the Chevron striping, it's a little difficult to see, but probably closer on your guys' screens, the Chevron striping will be located right in this area. And additionally, bollards will be installed in this area to further ensure the compliance of the designated traffic flow for the exit. There will be a five-foot-wide ADA compliant sidewalk along Northwest Seven Highway, and it is also shown on the site plan here and then also probably on your screens. This will utilize a pad-site building-type standards. There are, in the PD concept, there are requests to decrease the side setback along the north from a ten-foot to a three-foot. Uh, and it's also in the PD request, PD concept request, is to not meet the transparency requirements and the primary entrance requirement. Staff supports the decreased side setback since it is attached canopy and will not be fully enclosed structure, lessening the effect of the decreased setback. And staff is supportive of the request to not meet transparency and the primary entrance requirement due to the nature of the business and the design of the building. The parking requirement has been met. There are six stacking spaces from the entrance to be required. There is no actual parking stalls required with a car wash, but there are fourteen provided for the vacuums, five parking stalls for employees, and then one ADA parking. Bike parking will be reviewed with the PD final plan and the site plan design review. Pedestrian access has been met. All the sidewalks adjacent to the parking within the vehicle overhang are eight-foot, but there are no pedestrian-oriented entrance, so the sidewalk connection to the public sidewalk will not be necessary. And then... Here is the conceptual landscape. The conceptual landscape plan provides a request to waiver the requirement for a six-foot-tall privacy fence adjacent to the SF seven since the SF seven-zoned land is on the bank property to the south and the zoning does not accurately reflect the land use. There's also a request to reduce the required buffing widths due to the size of the site and proposed layout. Buffers on the west should be a seven-foot wide, and the applicant is requesting to decrease it to a five-foot and shall require thirty plant units per one hundred feet. Buffer on the east should be a fifteen-foot wide and request to decrease to a four-and-a-half-foot wide and shall require thirty plant units per one hundred feet. Buffer on the south, adjacent to the SF seven, required to be a twenty-five-foot minimum and a request to decrease it to two-and-a-half feet wide and shall require thirty plant units per one hundred feet. The applicant is also requesting that there shall not be a minimum percentage of plant units from shade and ornamental trees. Shrubs and evergreen and ornamental ground cover should be allowed to count for all plant unit requirements in all buffers. Support of the request because of the site currently does not have any buffering at this time, and if all minimum requirements were met, buildable area would decrease significantly without the waivers. Building is approximately forty-five hundred square feet and features a mix of metal panels and CMU blocks with a color palette... With a color palette including the grays, red, and white with a retro and futuristic element. All materials will be required to comply with a non-residential design standard. Outdoor lighting will be reviewed with the PD final plan and the site plan design review. And the final request is to the approval of a preliminary plat. The preliminary plat does include a single lot. Staff reviewed the rezoning request under the nine criteria, review criteria, including in the staff report, and finds that the request is in accordance with the comprehensive plan. The proposed zoning and development of the site with a PD zoning is appropriate since the development is on an arterial and is surrounded by auto-dominant uses. Approval of the application could encourage redevelopment of a vacant property along the Seven Highway. And based on this review criteria, staff recommends approval of the rezoning of the site to the PD commercial plan. Staff reviewed the PD concept plan under the seven review criteria included in the staff report and feels that the development would not have any adverse effect on the surrounding area. Staff believes requested modifications have been offset with the enhancements, including the landscaping that is currently not on-site and the use and business type is not heavily seen in the city. The city has three automatic tunnels, which is not substantial considering the size of the city. And based on this review criteria, staff recommends approval of the PD concept plan with the three staff conditions. Staff also recommends the approval of the preliminary plat with five conditions, and I'm here for any questions you may have. And we also have the applicant present for a presentation.
Can, excuse me, can you switch back to where it showed the above view of how the parking spots and everything were going to be laid out? So right there, is there a way, say, I've got, this is two questions here. Somebody comes in, what if, say, they decide they, they're not going to get the car washed? Is there a chicken exit, I guess?
There is a bell-out lane.
Is there?
Right here to the south.
Okay, that's what I thought, but in the landscape picture, it made it look like that was landscaped.
Yeah, yeah, there is that bell-out lane right there to the south of the property, which then would curve around to that exit.
All right, you're just my question.
Hi, Chair.
Yes.
No doubt here.
I did the same.
So it wasn't just me?
You can't see me on the end, can you?
We're both human. Yes, Commissioner, question?
I just had a question, if there were any, um... Specific big changes from when this was originally presented back in May to what's being presented now? Or is it pretty much the same?
I'm going to go ahead and have the applicant explain.
Okay.
The major differences.
Okay. I was not here for that meeting, and I was trying to go back and forth between the two, and I thought, well, you can summarize it for me.
Would you go into brief detail about the Chevron striping and bollards? Because it's, it's a concern. People are still going to try, and I'm just wondering what those things are explained.
Chair, I'll also have the applicant explain.
Okay, all right. Any other questions?
Chair.
Up here, yes.
Um, so, am I understanding that the, would a car wash be allowed in the GB zoning?
Yes, because with the, well, not typically. That's why we're doing the request of the rezoning with the addition of a car wash, but then we also took some of those other, um, uses out of it. So that way, it still restricts it to a GB, but with the addition of the car wash and then less other uses.
Okay, so without the rezoning, it wouldn't be able to go on that site?
No.
Okay.
Chair?
Yes.
I have several questions. In the city's master plan, is there any plan to put a sidewalk there in that area?
Uh, I believe the city does have plans to put sidewalks in the area of Seven Highway as part of the sidewalk improvement plan from at least I seventy down to forty highway. I don't remember if those sidewalks are on both sides of the street or one side of the street. I don't have, I don't know the answer to that right now.
Yeah, it's asking, is it, because isn't it what we do with developments?
Uh, we do, yes, if a sidewalk is planned to be in that or on that side of the street.
My second question, are there any opposition letters from residents or businesses?
No, not at this side.
Was there a traffic study?
Yes. There was a traffic study. Which... Traffic study was, uh, proposed for the Tommy's Car Wash development was conducted on June twenty-eighth of two thousand and twenty-four and submitted to MoDOT for review. MoDOT subsequently issued a letter of approval confirming its acceptance of the traffic impact study.
I, uh, I know that we always have issues and conversations about the traffic along Seven Highway there. There's no doubt during the summer months that it's very busy and congested in that area, and I appreciate this letter that we have sitting in front of us. But I know that it is a very busy, busy area. And there are multiple car washes in the area. And I'm concerned that if the business doesn't make it, will we just have another empty lot there? What would happen to it? You mentioned something about it would improve the area, but I have some concerns about that. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Anything else from up here, any questions for staff before we hear from the applicant? The floor is yours, sir.
My name is Rob Heisey, eight hundred East One Hundred and First Terrace, Kansas City, Missouri. And I'm a owner and operator with Heartland Tommy's Express in the Kansas City area. We are a local owner-operator in Kansas City, Manhattan, Kansas, and Northwest Arkansas. Our primary focus is in the Kansas City market. We currently have six operating locations and two under development, and we're a vertically integrated real estate development and construction company. As an investor and service provider, we've been active in Blue Springs for about thirty years and have completed a lot of, completed a lot of local projects. Um, part of us being involved in the community is to be, is to be, to do business to the community is to be involved in the community so we get and partner with the school district. We partner with the Chamber of Commerce, and we get involved with youth programs, particularly in the summertime, raising money for club teams and things like that. Um, as you all are aware, we were here before, and Planning Commission last time did pass our, uh, our case. And then city council had some concerns regarding traffic and I think circulation, basically, how cars would come in and out of our, out of our site. And so I'm going to address a few of those tonight. Major changes to a site plan did not happen. They were just, they're more minor changes, really focused on circulation and how it operates. We have also a car wash in Saint Joseph, Missouri. It has a site plan that's almost exactly the same. It's actually a smaller site plan than the proposed plan here in Blue Springs, and I'll go through some of those as well to help gain some understanding of how that site functions, and it's been open since two thousand and twenty. Um, as mentioned, we did do a traffic impact study, and that was not required by, by MoDOT, but after Planning Commission last time, there were enough questions at the Planning Commission meeting as well as some other rumblings that there were some traffic concerns. So before going to city council, we did have a traffic impact study done, and Blue Springs Public Works, MoDOT, and Kimley Horn conducted that traffic study. And, um, there were no additional requirements or traffic requirements that were required for us for this development. Um, if you could go to the next one. This is just a letter from the Missouri Department of Transportation saying that no further actions. There we go. So we want to kind of give an idea of like how, what traffic is like in our car washes. And so we did, our corporate office did a study over fourteen Midwestern locations. These are all Tommy's Express. So these are locations in the Midwest that have four seasons, very similar climate, where you have winter weather, you also have a lot of pollen in the spring, and so they all mix together, and so you have a lot of peaks and valleys over the course of the year. Daily average car washes that we have, and this goes across the six that we have as well, about six hundred cars a day, which is about point eight-three cars a minute if you were to average out over the hours that we're open. Um, there's twelve days a year where the highest daily average that we've had is thirteen hundred vehicles, just over thirteen hundred vehicles, which is about one point eight-nine a minute of the hours that we're open. We only have twelve days a year that we have over a thousand cars, and those are only in January and February. Those would be the winter months when we have the weather we have like right now. Sun comes out, things start melting, people really like to go and get that salt off their car and wash. That's where we have a lot of peak times. We manage those peak times very well, and we have a letter from the city of Saint Joe as we get on the presentation, from the Chief of Public Works, that they have not had any, and they checked with the police department as well. They have not had any backups onto Belt Highway, which is US one sixty-nine highway as well in Saint Joseph, Missouri, and again, it's a very similar site plan. And of the days that we have thousand car days, every one has been on a Friday, Saturday, or Sunday, and only three of those days were Fridays over the course of the year. So like twelve days out of the whole year, we have a thousand or more vehicles, which that's when we have some of those stressful days on a car wash. Um, site plan modifications, staff already mentioned. We limited some more uses, which were cannabis, adult entertainment, manufacturing, bar and tavern. One of the things I don't think we expressed very well at the city council meeting when we were back last time is really how our site circulates. And, you know, the north entrance, which we'll scroll here in a minute, but I'm going to go over the bullet points here, is the north entrance is going to be designated as entrance only. Uh, the south entrance, when we presented last time, you actually could go have two-way traffic in the south entrance. That's going to be designated now only as exit only. That's that Chevron striping, and then we will have bollards. Those bollards, I'll show some pictures in a moment. They're mobile bollards that we put out. They look like the ones that are at Target, but they're actually empty on the inside. They're plastic, they're very intimidating to a vehicle because you think you're going to hit them and hurt your car, but actually you would not hurt your car unless you hit them at a high impact, which the vehicles in the, in the car wash wouldn't do that. And then the Chevron striping. Reason why we don't bring that curb further out is because we have to get for fire access, if a fire truck has to get in there, they need more space as well as we need to provide space for our trash removal when they come in to remove the trash. And then we also turned on the site plan, which we'll get to, I can go one more. This is the site plan of Saint Joseph, Missouri. It, you can kind of see on the north side, that's the entrance. On the south side, that's the exit on the right side of the page. The Blue Springs proposed site has thirteen feet of more frontage than the Saint Joseph site.
What was that, what was that last statement? The last statement you just made? I didn't hear.
On the thirteen feet?
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, so the Saint Joseph site is thirteen feet, has thirteen feet of less frontage than the Blue Springs site. So the Blue Springs site is a little bit bigger. And, oh, it's the same distance from the exit of the tunnel to where you actually would make a turn onto Belt Highway, which is US one sixty-nine. And this is, and in Saint Joseph, Missouri, that is a full-access exit, so they can go north and south on Belt Highway there. The site, proposed site in Blue Springs is a right-out only once you come out of the location. The next one is a better image of comparing the two locations. Proposed Blue Springs is on the left, Belt Highway, Saint Joseph is on the right. You can see that the focus here is to look at the exit of the tunnel and where you actually would go back onto the highway on both locations. You can see that they're the same distance between those two. Actually, on, in Saint Joe, you can see that site plan actually allows for someone to come out of the car wash, make a left turn, and go into where the designated entrance is. Their signage and wayfinding, we have not had any issues with them going up to that north, north side. There's one or two cars occasionally that do do that. There has been, but has not caused any problems in terms of traffic or circulation in the site. Um, this is just an aerial view of the Saint Joseph location. Again, just trying to emphasize that it's very similar to the proposed Blue Springs location, and you can see just by the tire marks coming out of the south exit that you can go right and also make a left turn in a full-access environment. And we have a letter again from the Chief of Project Management at Saint Joe Public Works that says that they have not had any, any issues with traffic backing up onto Belt Highway, nor have the police reported any issues as it relates to traffic concerns. And this is the street view of the site, gives you a little better image of, you can see it's a little bit narrower, you know, north to south than the Blue Springs location. Uh, these are the bollards. These bollards can be moved very easily by one person. They're flat on the bottom, you turn them on their side, they roll very easily. They can be very intimidating, and we use them for traffic issues it may have. We have a stalled car, we have an issue with a lane, or there's some electronic problem. We can direct traffic very easily by using these bollards and rolling them across the site based on wherever any, any unique situation might occur. There's the letter from Saint Joe, which should be in your packet. Next location, these are the two Oletha locations. We don't have a letter from the city of Oletha Public Works, but if someone were curious, you could call them. We've had two locations there that function very, they're different. They exit out differently on the, to the public street. They're not on highways, and so we didn't include site plans for those right now as they weren't a good reflection of how these operate versus how the Blue Springs site might operate. We have the open park location, and that is, there are more slides, but that is my comments. I have other slides that might be helpful if there's questions that we want to get to. So backing up, I think that the direct questions that I wrote down were the bollards and the Chevron striping, correct? So if we could go back a few slides to the, where it showed the Blue Springs and Saint Joe, please?
That one or?
That'd be great, yep. So the Blue Springs proposed sites on the left, you can see how we angled the driveway so that it gets the car turning quickly versus being perpendicular to Seven Highway. It's more at a forty-five-degree angle, so that it just helps the merging movement onto Seven Highway in the event that there's busy traffic, because we all know that Missouri Seven Highway does have some busy, some busy days, busy most days. And the Chevron striping is just an industry term. I don't know why they call it Chevron. That's where we would put some of those bollards right there to make sure that people coming down Seven Highway, if they miss the entrance, that they would be deterred from turning into that location. And with signage, I didn't point out on the, the street view of the Saint Joseph site, but if you go back to that one, actually, thank you. You can see on the north, on the right side, the signage right there. Those say, and you can't read it because of the distance, but those are entrance signs and then where the blue car is exiting, on the other side, those both say exit, exit only. Let me go back to the Chevron sign again in case there's a question by chairman.
Uh, do you have a car count as to how many cars are able to stack in your driveway?
Uh, we can get twenty-two vehicles in the driveline. And then we can get more than that between the vacuums and exiting the car wash. More of those can come out that direction.
And is there an industry standard for what is normal for stacking? And would staff have any comments also in regards to norms for amount of car stacking in a car wash?
Our code mentions the six stacking for the entrance, and they meet that well over...
Over three times?
Mm-hmm.
Today at Overland Park, for example, is one of those days where the sun came out this afternoon. People are washing their car, and we were backed up, they were probably four deep. So there was probably twelve cars stacked there on a busy day, by way of example there. But twenty-two, we might hit twenty-two once every couple of years. And that would be a unique set of circumstances.
So you don't anticipate seeing it backing up out onto Seven Highway then at any time?
We really don't. We have it on Belt Highway, and it's been functioning for four years. Both Oletha locations don't back out onto the drives that they pull in from, and neither does our Arkansas location.
And you mentioned this site is, what you said, wider than the Saint Joe site. Overall, is it larger than the Saint Joe site or just wider?
I was just going by street frontage. I don't know the exact land acreage as it relates to the entire, um, uh, square feet of the whole site.
Because that was one of my concerns, it seemed like a lot going on that small site. But when you said the one in Saint Joe was smaller, kind of helped with that question.
Our location that we have on the west side in Manhattan, Kansas, is probably half the size, three-quarters the size of the Blue Springs site. And we only have that distance between the exit of the tunnel that goes out into the private drive and the Dylan's Grocery Store. So the Dylan's Grocery Store is right across, it's probably eight or ten parking stalls away from the exit of our car wash. And we have not had any problems with that location either with people exiting and just circulating back into traffic.
And I think you answered the question, but the significant change from when you presented before was basically the traffic flow of the site?
Yeah, the traffic flow has stayed, has stayed the same. I guess the most, the biggest change that we've made is not allowing or deterring people from entering into the exit off of Seven. So the only way to get out of the side is on the south side. The only way to get into the side is on the north side. And so between signage, the striping, and then the mobile bollards that we'll have, that will deter people from going in there. And that's been our experience in all the locations that we've had when we have this sort of circumstance.
Oh, thank you.
All right, is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this project?
All right, is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this project? The obvious. Anybody that would like to speak in opposition to this project? I will end the com, public comments section of this public hearing. Before I close the public hearing, any further discussion from staff? Or comments?
I don't believe that we do. Just wanted to point out that the stacking spaces are measured from the entrance to the car wash, not to the order box or anything that you would have at a, a drive-through restaurant. So looking at this, there's probably well over eighteen to twenty stacking spaces.
Yeah, exactly twenty-two.
Twenty-two stacking spaces, and so almost four times the amount of stacking. And I do believe that the last public hearing you had mentioned, that if, if you could expand upon what would happen if you do get super busy. Operations get backed up, you've got a nice sunny day, and there's more than twenty-two cars.
Yeah, we'll quickly pipe cones first before we can roll the ballards out. If we, if we got to a, a unique situation, maybe the card readers went down, or the internet went down and we couldn't read, or the cameras, we had lost power, and cards just kept flowing in, we would just go out and we would cone off and block, not allow, not allow anybody into the site. But that would be a, you know, a unique circumstance, it would not be customary operations for us to ever have to do that.
I'm gonna take a wild stab on this one for staff. Any idea of the contrast of stacking of some of the other similar tunnel car washes on Seven Highway, and how those numbers, stacking numbers compare to this? And I know it's probably a long shot to put you on the spot this short notice, but.
Well, I could look real quick. I think the most of, the other car washes that are in and near Seven Highway would be the, off Seven Highway, but it's on Forty Highway, would be the Title Wave. And that is a very long circuitous route to get to that one, so there are probably easily twenty or thirty stacking spaces. The North Go Car Wash, you have to pull off of Seven Highway, go up into the parking lot, and kinda maneuver your way around that, and so that any overflow parking there would not back up onto Seven Highway. The main culprit that everybody points to is the one out in, in front of the Mall of Fall Creek, south of Brewers. Pulling that one up right now.
Is that the one in front of Side Pockets by Culvers?
Yes, that one on a busy day is backed up to stop by.
Yes, that one is probably the, the main poster child for not handling stacking well. But it's also indication of how busy and how much of a need there is for car washes in this part of town. You know, our market studies and needs assessment analysis show that actually Blue Springs is short two car washes for the entire city. And so, while it feels like we have a lot, they're also kind of in a concentrated area, but additions of more car washes help ease the demand on some of these more busy ones. But in terms of parking or stacking on this one, it's.
On the Go Car Wash?
On the Go Car Wash, it's probably maybe sixteen, eighteen? Just off, guess off the site plan, just looking at it, I'm looking at it, I see three, four, five, six cars, till you get kind of a double lane frontage that maybe fits five on each, so. I would say it's, it's less than what is being proposed here.
So Mr. Mellon, you said there's a need for more car washes, but they're unfortunately in a concentrated area, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, and so like, based upon our market analysis, and I've talked with our economic development manager about this, the amount of households and the average car per household, and our needs assessment from retail strategies suggests that for a city our size, we, we're in the market for at least two more car washes that are needed in this city. The north side of the city seems to be taken care of, the middle part of the city seems to have more, because that's where the population is more dense, and then maybe one down on the south side. But as more car washes are approved, that takes the demand off of the other car washes, and then reduces the backlog of cars on those other ones, so.
You don't believe we have enough car washes in this area?
From the market analysis, from our retail strategies, and from our economic development manager, I do not believe that we have enough tunnel car washes in the city, the modern tunnel car washes. I do think that there is a perception that we have too many car washes in the city because of their proximity to each other. And we have no regulations in the city whatsoever about how many businesses of a similar type can be located closer to another business, unless it's specifically written into the code for such things as payday lending, tobacco, and body art. As you will see at the intersection of South Out of Road and I, and Highway Seven, we will soon have four cheeseburger restaurants on one corner.
Has there, has there ever been any discussion about the ordinances of the same businesses of the same type?
For a car wash, no. For other types of businesses, that the city council has determined they want to limit the number of those businesses and set parameters about how many of those can be in the city, there's per capita limits, but also separation limits. And those typically only apply to tobacconists, short-term lending, body art, and I believe that is it.
So you think that should apply to car washes in this case?
I don't, I, I don't believe that that is something that's ever been discussed before. And the other three industries or businesses where those were brought up, there were very specific public health, safety, and welfare criteria that were introduced or used as justification for limiting those types of businesses. Whether it's payday lending and the predatory practices on the Blue Springs residents, or the body art, and then the other one, the short-term lending or whatever it is. So I think there were very public, there was very specific public health, safety parameters that were put on those, and the reasons why those were brought forward by city council, they were vetted by the Public Safety Citizens Advisory Board, I know a number of those were. But those, I believe, are the only limited businesses we have based on per capita population and also separation between other uses, other than the state-mandated marijuana ones.
Thank you. Anything else in the applicant?
I might add, just on, on, from a vehicle processing standpoint, and this is me going through with my timer on my, my cellphone, but you go through our car wash, it's about two, two minutes and twenty-three seconds to get through a hundred-and-thirty-foot tunnel. Going through the, one of the competitive car washes that was mentioned earlier on the south side on Missouri Seven, is it's four minutes and twenty-three seconds to get through that wash. Therefore, the processing speed at which cars can come out of the, a wash is important in terms of, one of the reasons why we don't back out onto, onto roads. And, and we are a conveyor belt system on the inside of our car wash versus a chain and roller. Chain and roller, they can't speed up or slow down the chain and roller, it has one speed that it goes through. On a belt system on a busy day, we can actually increase the RPMs that we can, it's not the RPMs, but that's the easiest way to describe it, how, how quickly you can get through. When you go through the car wash, you actually get your car washed twice in our car wash. That way, if we have a, a rocker go out, which are the things that spin like this, we can pull that out of service, but you're still getting your vehicle washed and going through. And on a belt system, you can get the cars about three feet from each other. And again, this is at a time when we have to process cars quicker. Conversely, if we need to, we can also slow it down. If we're trying to get cars to exit, we can also slow that down and, and reduce the amount of how, reduce the amount of vehicles that were emptying out into the, into the, into service back into traffic.
Thank you, one further point of clarification on your last comment. It's a whole conveyor system, meaning you drive your car on a pad and the whole pad moves your car?
Yep, just like in your KCI, but you go between the two terminals, it's just like that.
Oh, interesting.
And you, your car's in neutral, and when you're done, they'll tell you to go into park, or excuse me, go into drive, and then you exit by putting your car in a gear.
Unless there's anything else from the commissioners up here, I will close the public hearing.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, as for that, I will ask for a motion on the rezoning portion.
Chair.
Yes?
Make a motion for the rezoning RZ 1124-9418 for Tommy's Express Car Wash.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Tracy, could I get a rule call, please?
Commissioner Stowenberry?
Aye.
Commissioner Sanderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Cradoff?
No.
Commissioner Graham?
Aye.
Commissioner Ingersoll?
Aye.
Commissioner Pumphrey?
No.
Chairperson Hennig?
Aye.
This item will be recommended and heard by the city council at their Monday, January twentieth meeting at six o'clock. I would ask for a motion on the planned development concept plan portion of this.
Chair.
Yes?
I move to approve Plan Development Concept Plan PDC 1124-9419 with its seven criteria.
I have a motion, how about a second?
Second.
A second, Tracy, could I get another rule call, please?
Commissioner Sanderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Cradoff?
No.
Commissioner Graham?
Aye.
Commissioner Ingersoll?
Aye.
Commissioner Pumphrey?
No.
Commissioner Stowenberry?
Aye.
Chairperson Hennig?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I may, the next city council meeting is Tuesday, the twenty-first, because it's Martin Luther King Day.
Tuesday, the twenty-first, that's, all right. Thank you for that clarification, Ms. Culpepper. So that motion carries, and it came with three conditions for a point of clarification. And that also will be heard at the council's meeting on the twenty-second. Two more, a motion on the preliminary plat portion of this.
Is it all me tonight?
Yep.
Chair, I move to approve preliminary plat PP dash one-one-dash-two-four-dash-nine-four-two-zero for Tommy's Express Car Wash.
I have a motion, I have a second?
Second.
Seconds, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Any opposed?
No.
All right, that motion carries, I think we have one no.
That's two no's.
Two no's, did not hear you down there, thank you for clarifying that. And a motion on the site plan design review portion.
Chair, I move to approve SPDR dash one-one-dash-two-four-dash-nine-four-two-one for Tommy's Express Car Wash.
And you'll have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
No.
Two no's, motion carried. Thank you very much for coming this evening. Moving on, the next agenda item is number six, the alternative sign plan, ASP twelve dash twenty-four dash nine-four-three-one. Ms. Frye, once again, please.
Okay. I'm gonna try not to cough all the way through this.
At your leisure.
Before you this evening is a request for the amendment to the master alternative sign plan at Adams Dairy Landing for the Target Corporation. Oh, no. There you go. Located at one zero four zero northeast Coronado Drive, the applicant is requesting additional building mountain si, mounted signage that deviates from the sign code and from the Adams Dairy Landing Master Sign Plan ASP zero-six-zero-eight-one-seven-eight-zero by exceeding the permitted number of signs per building facade. City code also states, any changes to a master sign plan must be approved through planning commission. The application, the applicant is requesting approval to install two additional building mounted signs. The proposed new signage will be a total with the existing three-hundred-and-nineteen and ninety-nine square feet. It was from the existing of two-twenty-six seventy-five, and this is pertaining to the north elevation, which is here on the front. Which still remains within the allowable sign limit of the ten percent of the total facade. The allowable square footage for the front facade is five-thousand-two-hundred-and-eighty square feet, but it has, in the master sign code, or in master sign plan states a maximum of three total signs. They're asking for an additional one, which would be the four on the north side. The proposed signage complements the design, color, and composition of the other onsite signage and of the building. The proposed signage will be the acrylic faced with the internal illumination with the aluminum cabinets, which is consistent with the existing signage. Target is doing basically a, a facelift. They're gonna redo some of their signs and then facelift the existing signage. And the proposed signage does meet the intent of the sign code. Since Target is a major tenant in the Adams Dairy Landing with the larger facade, then most of the tenants, the signage is appropriate for the size and being on the frontage of northeast Coronado. It is appropriate for time, place, and manner in order to attract the attention of those traveling on the northeast Cor, uh, Coronado corridor. And staff recommends approval of the amendment to the master alternative sign plan with the one condition. I'm here for any questions, the applicant is not here, but I can answer any questions.
The applicant is not here, all right. Any questions from up here?
Just a little clarification, please, you said something about because it's on the corner of Coronado, and the actual building itself is not on that corner, so I misunderstood that.
Either I misspoke, I probably misspoke, but, no, it's, it's located on the corridor of northeast Coronado.
Yeah, there it is.
I probably garbled it.
That's okay, I'm just trying to think clearly, that's okay.
Would you go to the screen where it shows how much square footage is allowed versus how much they're requesting, please?
So this is, they have the chart that's low, Adobe is not playing nice. So here on is the chart that shows what they're requesting. And by looking at, let me scroll down to this next one. So looking at the total facade, which we got from the four-hundred-and-nineteen feet to the hundred-and-twenty-six, that gives us that five-thousand-two-hundred-and-eighty square foot, because originally that's fifty-two thousand and it's ten percent of that. And so they're just adding one more, or two more signs that, they're not allowed to have more than three. So they're adding a CVS in a drive-up one. So they're gonna relocate this one and then add additional one that's for pickup.
Well, it seems like such a large facade, it certainly doesn't seem like it's anything out of line or intrusive.
We probably won't even notice.
Yeah, and if anything, it's gonna, it looks more updated, so.
Yes.
I like it. All right, anything else up here before we go for vote? How about a motion?
Chair.
Yes, sir.
I've moved to approve Master Alternative Sign ASP twelve twenty-four-dash-nine-four-three-one for Target.
Second. I have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Moving on to our monthly community report. Got some fun numbers for us tonight?
Yeah, thank you, this time we're gonna have Chris Willis, associate planner, provide those stats.
All right, Chris.
As our, our new person taking over our reports.
Absolutely.
Spreading the wealth of.
Let's be sure to think of a bunch of hard questions.
Please, please.
Why gives?
So we're sitting here at December twenty-twenty-four. While this also captures the numbers for December, it also kinda provides a cumulative total of the permits and some of the construction costs that have taken place across the entire year of twenty-twenty-four. December twenty-four, we had twenty-nine single-family detached permits come through. We didn't have any two-family or multifamily permits come through in the month of December. So there were twenty-nine total dwelling units approved in December twenty-four. And as far as the total permits for December of twenty-four, we had a hundred-and-sixteen. Moving on to the year for twenty-twenty-four, we had a hundred-and-ninety single-family detached permits approved. We had three two-family, which includes six units total. And then we had seven multifamilies, seven fourplexes, for a total of twenty-eight units in the year twenty-twenty-four. Two-hundred-and-twenty-four dwelling units were approved within twenty-twenty-four. And then lastly, one-thousand-two-hundred-and-seventy-four total permits during the year of twenty-twenty-four. And I'll go ahead and give you the totals for year twenty-twenty-four as far as total square feet, one million four-hundred-and-fifty. one million four hundred and fifty-nine thousand and ninety-five. Total construction cost, one hundred and thirty-eight million, uh, nine hundred and fifty-three thousand, seven hundred and thirty-four. And we had six thousand three hundred and twenty inspections for the year of twenty-twenty-four. This gives you a chart showing the, uh, spread of the single-family building permits. It all shows twenty-twenty-three and twenty-twenty-four to give you a comparison and a contrast from year to year. Uh, we had fifty-one code cases in December of twenty-twenty-four. And as far as planning activity, we had a UDC text amendment that was recommended approval by you all, and also approved by city council and was given an ordinance. And then as far as administrative approvals, uh, we did an administrative site and design review for Amazon, which was an AVI tunnel for automatic vehicle inspections. And I believe that that, well, I'll go ahead and let you guys know about signs. As far as the year twenty-twenty-four, we had fifty-one sign face replacements, fifteen ground-mounted, uh, ninety-two building-mounted, forty-eight temporary, and then four other signs, which could be including but not limited, flags, paired bracket, mural, et cetera. So yes, some data from twenty-twenty, or from December twenty-twenty-four, but I really wanted to emphasize where we are for a cumulative year of twenty-twenty-four as we reflect back on the previous year. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you guys have.
I can't think of any. Anybody?
Got any good questions for Chris this evening? You got off easy.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Chris. Our next meeting is two weeks from tonight, on Monday, January twenty-seventh. If there's no other business, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And opposed? This meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.